Good evening, and welcome to the September 22, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And just before we get started, Angela Weakley, a fellow board member, is not going to be able to attend tonight. She's got the cold. She's sick. The cold, kind of, that's a bad one, got her here over the last few days. So she is at home recuperating. And we have a pretty light agenda, so we'll get through this in a pretty small audience today. It's a gorgeous day outside, but we'll get through the business here. The next item on our agenda is our moment of silence, so please join me in that moment Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll read the school district's mission statement. "The Waterloo Schools Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community." Now's the time on the agenda for information from individuals and delegations. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the next item on our agenda. And it's the first, the first three items that we have, A, B, and C, deal with what's essentially the annual meeting and the reorganizational meeting. And so we talked, I talked with Mrs. Arndorfer, the board secretary, before. It's a little bit different now because in the past, we've always had an annual meeting of the board, and there's some ceremonial things that we do. It's a little different since the legislature changed law from, school board terms from three years to four years, so there are elections every other year. It saves money by not having school elections every year. But it just means, board member terms, you have two years in between changes to the board. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense because nothing's changed. We didn't have an election here last week, so things are generally the same. But the question was, do we still need to have the reorganizational meeting of the board? And I think after speaking with Mr. Coughlin, that answer was yes. So we'll go through these now. In some ways, they're ceremonial. I don't mean to trivialize them, but with, like, the financial documents and the papers that we're supposed to move, some of it is somewhat of a historic, maybe antiquated process. But regardless, we'll start with Exhibit A. It's on page one. The motion there, this regards the certified annual report with the treasurer's report. And the recommended motion for this one is that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report from June 30, 2014, and approve the list of financial institutions as depositories with corresponding maximum amounts in Policy 701.1, Depository of Funds, and place on file the certified annual report 2014 as required by the Iowa Department of Education. Can we get that motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you. On a second?
Second.
And for discussion, Mr. Coughlin, if we could, turn it over to you just for a little bit of background information on this.
Okay. This is part of the requirement of a closing board to kind of give the final blessing on the books for 2014, the year, school year that we just finished. The annual report is due by September 15 each year, so that was just filed a week ago. The auditors are here today. And things are all kind of happening at the same time. So the components that need to be addressed by the board, first of all, is approval of the treasurer's report. And this is what would be called a review of the fund balance. Not the cash balance, not the authorized balance, but the fund balance. So if you think about a balance sheet, even of your own budget, you have so much cash on hand, but then you are owed money by other people, but you also are owing things to other people. So you have accounts receivable and accounts payable. And when that is all calculated through, with the revenues and expenditures actual that you have for the year, it shows your new fund balance for the end of the year. So if you look on page two, the columns are all divided out by all the different funds that we have: general funds, student activity, management, which is basically the insurance, and early retirement benefits for staff, the sales tax fund, PEPAL fund. Debt service fund is the fund that we use to pay back the bonds. Then the enterprise fund is food service. And the trust fund is some scholarships that we have on hand that we keep track of in the district. So the beginning fund balance for each of the funds is there. Then you add the actual revenues and the actual expenditures for the year, and that calculates down to the bottom line of an ending balance. So one of the most important is the general fund. We started with a little over 3.9 million. We had 2 million more in revenue than we did expenditures, and ended up with 6.2 million fund balance for the year. So if you look at the top and bottom line all the way through, we generally had improvement through the year of the position on June 30, the exception being the sales tax where we're still ahead of revenues and our expenditures by being a little aggressive on some of our projects. But the general fund has been transferring money to that account to keep it positive. So those are the fund balances that are an outline of each one of the funds. And I'll just stop in between and see if there's any questions on the three parts that we'll address.
This is a fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
What are the dates, then?
July 1 to June 30.
Of 2013 to 2014.
To June 30 of 2014.
Correct.
Yeah.
Could you go ahead?
Could you go ahead with just a little more explanation of the debt service fund, where that money really is?
The debt service fund, it contains a couple of different parts. One of them is, when you borrow money, you have to put aside 10% retainage, basically. So of the 75 million in bond issues that we've had, even though part of that principal is paid down, the original 7.5 million roughly is still in this bond debt account, or the debt service account, so it's in holdings. That money, we will get back once we pay off the debt. But it's there to just ensure that we have enough cash on hand to make our payments. The other part is, we have a special bond issue, which was our QSCB, which we make payments annually on a 10-year note, but we don't pay back the actual investors until it's all over. So we're making a payment into the debt service account, but we keep that money. So that's how it's raising from 11.8 million, and now it's up to 14 million, is that we are just holding that principal in that account until it's due at the end of its full term. So that's why we carry that much money in the debt service. And the other part of it is, when we actually make a payment, we don't pay for our bond, the $10 million bond that we have, which is the third one. When we make actual annual payments for that, we transfer out of the sales tax fund into the debt service fund, and then write the check from there. So that account truly is showing the activity that has the reserve for those bonds and the payment made on those bonds. It wouldn't show any payments made for the projects to pay the contractor to work on Hoover, or Orange, or whatever. That all goes through the sales tax fund.
So if I understood you correctly, part of this is reserved, and part of it is actual liabilities?
Yes.
That we have accrued.
Yeah, we've got about 7.5 million in reserves there that we will eventually get back.
Is that in a line item, or are you just saying that separately?
It's just part of that balance, the beginning balance of the 11,808.
Okay.
So the reserves go in there when you sell the bond, so it's a one-time placement in that account. The revenues and expenditures in there are just when we actually make a payment.
So you have the 11,808 plus the 7.3 minus the 5.2?
Yes.
Okay. And then where's the 19,260? How is that?
That's just the addition of those two. Your beginning balance, plus the amount that's moved in there.
So that's a subtotal, and then minus?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Equals. Is that the way all these columns kind of run, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Beginning balance, add the revenues to get a subtotal of total resources, and then minus the expenditures gives you the ending fund balance. I'll move on to the next pages, which is the certified annual report. This is a report that is required by the Department of Education. This is what the auditors compare all of our internal accounting numbers to. It has been an adjustment over the last three or four years as the Department of Education becomes more automated, where I like to say they can see what's in every one of our cells, because we have to submit all of our records just as a download. We don't get a form and fill it all in. It pulls it directly out of our accounting files, which is a good thing. But then they can see what we put in every single account number. And with that as well, they have a lot of formulas that then has to match what they have sent us, as an example. If we don't record the right revenue for state aid, they'll say, ah, no, we sent you this much. It has to agree in this cell. So it really has become more of a partnership of getting everything correct, acceptable to the DE, and then they can understand what we're putting in, and they treat everybody the same. And for all the years I've done this, it's always been an issue of schools can record things different ways. And we may show a certain picture, but Des Moines records it a little different way, so they don't really have a true apples-to-apples. So they really are very close to treating us all exactly the same. So if you look at another school's books, what they've spent on certain areas, it should be very close to every other district. So that's a good thing. But it does mean some tweaking and adjusting with account numbers and understanding all of those formulas, but it's been getting easier every year. So the balance sheet, again, is, and I'll just kind of go through what these are, and if you want to stop me in between and ask a question about a particular one, that's fine. So the balance sheet is all the funds. And this is just a balance sheet as you're used to, the assets, minus the liabilities, gives you the fund equity. So if you see on line 37, close to the bottom, that's 6.226 million fund balance, that's where the number comes from for the treasurer's report. But if you look up at the top, cash and investments are over 13 million. Plus, we've borrowed to the sales tax, two lines below that, 3.8 million. So really, 17 million is in cash credited to the general fund. But when you calculate through everything that we owe, two months of salaries, plus other accounts payable, and some receivables coming in, our net value or our fund balance then calculates down to that 6.2 million. Hence, would be the same principal formula in all of the other funds that we used: student activity, management, sales tax, PEPAL, debt service, food service, trust funds, and Page four is kind of a summary. It is, by each of the funds, again, the top half of the first 20 lines are the revenues that are coming in by category for all the different funds: state aid, and tuition, and investments, and so on. That looks a little bit more like what you see on your monthly reports that I provide to the board. So you can look in there and see, for each of the funds, the revenue groups that come in, the expenditure groups by the different programs: instruction, student services, instructional, general administration, and so on. That would include all the salary benefits supplies for each one of those areas, which then brings you down to the same calculation of 122 million in revenue and 120 million in expenses, with our fund balance being 6.22 million. And again, the same pattern of records for all the other funds. Page five is a detail of all the revenue. So you can take that top half of page four, and it's all broken out by the revenue from local sources, state sources, federal sources, in all the different funds, to give you a bigger breakdown of where all the revenue comes from. Then page six, and through the next several pages, each of those funds in detail of the expenditures by object code, by function and by object code. So the instruction, you see how much was salaries, how much was benefits, how much was purchase services, supplies, and so on. So it's just a more detailed exhibit of these different categories as you go deeper into Any questions on those? We are going to review these again tomorrow in the finance committee, in case you have any questions, or you can just send me a question if you'd like something more in The last thing mentioned in the motion was on page 12. We've always had a Depository of Funds policy, the 701.1, and it has gone kind of in a cycle because several years ago, we always listed who the banks were and what our limits were. And they kind of changed their philosophy and said, no, you don't need to show all that detail, just show that they're an approved bank, and the board has approved that through their policies. And now they've come full circle again and said, no, we really want to see who it is and how much you're putting in as a maximum. So we have Farmer State Bank that we do our basic banking with, the Iowa School Joint Investment Trust, which is set up by the School Board Association, and that gives a vehicle for the state to transfer all the money to the schools. I think over 95% of the schools use the investment trust, so then the state is working with one financial institution to transfer all the money, and then we transfer it into our accounts, and so on. And Bankers Trust is the bank that we use for all of our bond activity, that sinking fund, that holding of the reserves. That's why they are, and they specialize in that. That's why we continue to use them.
Okay. And so, like, the 50 million for Farmer State Bank, that's up to, we can put that much in, but no more?
Right. Yeah. We usually, I mean, because money flows through all year. If you remember the graphs that you get, I think the highest we've been since I've been here is 30 to 35 million. So that keeps us within the cap of saying, we have authority, you have given me authority to deposit that much in those accounts.
May I ask, why is there a limit? Does the board set the limit, or does something else?
Well, you do by approving this. These are just, if we ended up with a different cash flow situation, and we ended up with 70 million in there at one time, the auditors just want to know that. They want to know that you are aware of how much money is going through.
Oh, okay.
Which, as you get that graph of cash flow, you see that on a monthly basis. So that's really what works in partnership with this policy, so you can kind of see what's going through our accounts at any given month.
Okay. Thank you.
So how exposed are we to the financial stability of these financial institutions? In other words, is there any insured amount, other than?
Well, all of these banks are governed by their institutions, FDIC, and of course, that's not anywhere near this level of money that goes in there. But for high-level depositors, when we do our, let me step back. Every four years, we go out with an RFP for banking services, and we show what kind of money is going through. Well, there's been several banks in town that are not able to handle the amount of cash flow that we have. So they're not able to get collateralization for that, or they don't want to pledge that much to it. It's too much of their capacity. I think in the first half of the time that I was here, Wells Fargo was our bank. You know, they're a national, big chain, which that was no problem for them. But Farmer State was, at the last, RFP was able to facilitate our needs. And it was a recommendation that came from saying, let's stay with a local bank, local owners, local benefit to the district, and they've been serving us very well. So, but from the stability of their institution, they have to pledge to that when they answer our RFP. So they're putting themselves on the line as they agree to meet all the needs that we have, and they have the capacity to do that. But they are required by their own, I'm sure, state rules, that they have to have the collateralization capacity to cover a business of our size, and they sign off to all of that when we do our RFP.
I think that, was that two years ago, we switched to?
Yeah, I think this is, we're starting our third year with Farmer State, I believe.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. If not, going back to the recommended motion on page one, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us next to Exhibit B, which is the election of board officers for president and vice president. And so, again, I talked before about how this is a little bit different in that we haven't had an election here, but we still will go through and elect the board president and vice president with Mrs. Arndorfer, our board secretary. This is Exhibit B on page 13, and this is considered our annual meeting. And the first order of business, then, is electing the officers for the coming year. And so, Mrs. Arndorfer will conduct this part of the meeting until the president and vice president have gone in. So I will turn it over to our board secretary.
Okay. So the first order of business, then, is to elect the board president. We'll take nominations. We do not need a second, so I will take nominations for president of the board.
I would like to nominate Mr. Young.
Thank you.
And we need a nomination to close, or, excuse me, a motion to close the nominations. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the nomination for office of president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And motion carried. Mike Young has been nominated for the office of president of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Mike Young, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. And second, we will take nominations for the office of vice president of the board.
I nominate Shanley.
And do we have any other nominations? I'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of closing the nomination for the office of vice president of the Board of Education, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Shanley McNally has been nominated for the office of vice president of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Shanley McNally, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay. If you two will stand, we'll administer the oath.
Okay. Sure.
Right behind us. Where are we going, over here? Everyone, he's going to shift. Okay. You'll raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president and vice president of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law.
I will.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We do. Now you can kiss the ground.
But if you didn't say, "I will," I was going to say, "I do."
I do. I agree.
I concur.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Then that takes us next to the reorganization of the board. And this is Exhibit C on page 18. And so, do you want to read the, or, no, it's back to me. Excuse me. Okay. The recommended motion here is that the president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Mike Young, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require his signature, and the vice president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Shanley McNally, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature in the absence of the president. And that the signature plate of Mike Young, immediate past president of the Board of Education, be authorized to continue as a valid check signature until a plate for the new president can be obtained, and the superintendent be authorized to invest school district monies prior to allocating these funds towards payment of expenditures in accordance with Board Policy 701.8, and that the Board of Education reaffirms all policies and actions of the preceding boards. That motion, it's been moved, and a second?
Second.
Okay. And for discussion, again, some of this, this is more of the ceremonial part that we talked about before, but there is some importance to it, mostly legally and I think financially as well, just to authorize the activities of the board and the district. Any further discussion on this? If not, then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Then that takes us to graduation dates for high school, and there's been a lot of effort that's gone into this because there were a number of scheduling factors that came into play, I believe going back to the state track meet, correct?
It does.
And I will turn it over now to Dr. Lindeman to explain this. It's the graduation dates for Expo West and East.
Yeah, certainly. We thought we had graduation dates solidified early on, and then we found out that the state track meet had been changed. And so, we just tried to do our due diligence in making sure that we didn't create a conflict for students who would make the state track meet, whereas they might have to choose between graduation or running in the state track meet. So we had a lot of conversation, we talked with school staff, and we ended up actually doing a survey to parents. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't a huge response rate, but we did have So, uh, we had a lot of conversation, we talked with school staff, and we ended up actually doing a survey to parents. Um, it wasn't, you know, there wasn't a huge response rate, but we did have, you know, a hundred parents almost that, that responded. The great part is that we had given them some options of dates that didn't have a conflict and, um, with like Saturday night of, of Memorial Day weekend or Sunday. And, uh, West High was, um, you know, a pretty high percentage actually voted for Saturday night, and a pretty high percentage, um, sixty-plus percent of the East High respondents, um, asked for Sunday. So, you know, I don't know what we would have done if they would have both asked for exactly the same time. I guess we would have had to try to figure out a, a time we were just considering that, uh, you know, a wonderful thing, that it actually came out that way, that the majority was able to rule in this. So, we are happy to announce, um, and after it's, you know, after this, this is recent, this is accepted by you guys, we are, um, looking forward to publicizing widely. Tara is ready to go, and so we would be making phone calls, um, to parents and doing a full communication plan to make sure everyone is aware of that. So I'll just, um, we're looking at Expo Alternative Learning Center on Wednesday, May twentieth. Um, they have historically had their graduation on a Wednesday night, so this is kind of in keeping with that tradition, and that would be at six P.M. And then, um, going back, and I do understand, um, I talked with Sue Flynn, and, and she provided me a little history that actually graduations were on the weekends at one time, and then we kind of changed away, and now, you know, looking back, back at that. So, West High will be held on Saturday evening, May twenty-third, at seven P.M. And East High, we are looking to set that date as Sunday, May twenty-fourth, at two P.M. And I know that parents have said that they are around that weekend because they're attending graduations themselves, and, you know, they're, they're children's friends and that kind of thing, so we hope it works out. We certainly have tried our very best to make sure that we find something that, that works, um, and I, I hope that's accurate, so.
I know it's a lot of work going into it.
Well.
Any other discussion or questions?
I just, Jane, as far as, um, being a little disappointed in the response rate, I don't, that's not up to us. We provide the opportunity.
Right.
And I think that's, you know, people like to be asked, and the ones that are asked, respond.
Yeah.
And the ones that didn't, didn't respond, they can't complain because they could have responded.
Yep.
You know, I mean, so I, I don't think the main objective was the numbers and the response, it was to say, "We want your opinion and we validate your opinion."
Right, yeah.
So I just, I, I would, kudos to doing it and the work it took to do it, because if you ask and you get an answer, that's all you can expect.
Yeah, and I think we, um, in case people are curious about how many, um, students, I believe there's about seven hundred seven who are, are, um, in that graduating class, so we did send out that many, you know, um, requests for completion of the survey, so we got, you know, about a hundred out of seven hundred, so, but at least we, we did have some, it did provide direction, so we thanked the hundred people who did log into that, it was, it was helpful.
Right, and plus all seven hundred were given the opportunity, so, you know, if they don't respond, they don't respond. But, and then I did have a question with Expo. It, um, I have done their graduations a couple times, and it's been at Young Arena, so I see it's at the school actually this year?
Um.
Or at Central. We've done it at Central.
It has been at Central, usually unless your notice at Central, so I'm going to look at that.
But this says Expo.
Yeah, it does, it does.
I've never been to one at the.
You know?
No, and they have an auditorium, right?
I'm gonna double check on that. They do, they do have an auditorium.
Cause it's the same, um, I think it's the same layout as Logan was, and so, it's a smaller auditorium.
Right, but I guess I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I want to check the reasoning of that.
You know, I guess I did, I didn't, I actually did not question that, but, um, I believe they did work with the school staff to set that, that location, so I'm gonna double check on that, we'll make sure when we, of course, when we communicate that, that we have double-checked that, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, well, cause I just don't want people to, it would be good to know the history to people, those kids say, "Well, we'd rather have it at another venue, not at our school."
Yep, yep.
So if it was chosen by the students and the staff, that would be good to communicate.
Right, and I believe it has been at Central, at least since I've been going, that it's been at Central for a while, so I don't know about history, you know, longstanding history, but, yeah.
But even Central's different than where you go.
Absolutely, right, absolutely.
Right.
So we will, I'll double-check that, just to make sure we get that right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of four items, uh, the minutes of our last regular board meeting on September eighth, and then a September, September tenth, special board meeting regarding, uh, um, re-entry hearing. Uh, next, we have personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting. Then we have bills due and payable between board meetings. And then finally, uh, an item for board member travel for, um, one, the Cedar Valley Coalition trip, um, that's put on by the Cedar Valley Alliance in the spring to Washington, D.C. And then two, and probably the biggest thing, is the, um, Iowa Associates Association of School Boards Convention, and also the Urban Education Network's meet, annual meeting is around then too, in Des Moines, and that's in November, the week before Thanksgiving. So those four items, um, I will ask that Exhibit G, the bills due and payable, um, be removed, cause I'll abstain on that, but are there any other items that board members wish to be removed? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda with the exception of items, or, excuse me, the acceptance of Item G, bills due and payable.
Salute.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That then takes us to Exhibit G on page thirty, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings.
Salute.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, and just for discussion, again, I'll abstain from voting on this matter because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills. Any questions or discussion?
I don't see anything.
Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I will abstain. So motion carried. That takes us next to, um, Exhibit I, it's, um, regarding the River Hills, um, School Consortium. Uh, this is on page forty-one, and there's a difference, um, this year, River Hills has changed, been on the board since two thousand and seven, and so River Hills and Castle Hill have changed, I think, due in parts to state and then federal law as well, kind of being, um, with the, the, I guess, ownership taken over by the individual school districts?
Yeah.
Um, rather than AEA two-six-seven. Um, we'll get this motion on the table, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman first, and then Mr. Coughlin to give some background on this. But the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the agreement to establish a consortium to jointly administer an instructional program at River Hills School located within the boundaries of the Cedar Falls Community School District for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen year as presented.
Salute.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, and, uh, Dr. Lindeman?
Yeah, the, um, I'm not sure that the legislation has actually changed the statutes, but, uh, there was a clarification that came to us, uh, a little less than a year ago, and, um, actually not to just us, but actually to the, to all the districts in the state of Iowa, just clarifying that AEA or, um, area education agencies were really not in the business of running a school. So, any districts that, any AEA's that had that, um, really, they were asked to consider one of several different models, and so, um, you know, for example, you could, um, actually house the, the students in a different school instead of running it by AEA, or you could take the, the management of the building within the district. And so, um, River Hills is actually one that lies within the Cedar Falls boundary, and so we, we have students that go there, as do many other districts, and so, we were, um, once we got that guidance, we kind of got to work, um, as did, as did Cedar Falls and AEA, because we knew AEA could not run the building. So we looked at what our options were, and, um, the intent of that was really to make sure that AEA's weren't running the building, and that the, the educational programming was delivered by the districts instead of an AEA. So, we have been working, um, there, there's really not a lot of, um, changes in the, the operations of the building, but there's really a lot of changes in the, the fiscal responsibility and the fiscal planning for that, and the management probably is a better word. So, uh, Michael has been, uh, meeting, and actually has a, another meeting coming up with, um, Cedar Falls, being hosted by Cedar Falls, um, Finance Office, the, the manager, and, as, and they've invited all of the different, um, CFOs to take a look at exactly what that means. So, um, and I'll, I'll let Michael share a little bit, but that's really what the request is, to allow, we're asking the board to approve that we could enter into a consortium, because the consortium with Cedar Falls being the fiscal agent for that, the consortium can run the building, and that's what we're asking to do, that is one of the principal models, so.
Gotcha.
Michael, would you add anything about the fiscal piece of it?
Um, yeah, I think we've talked about this, uh, a few months ago with special education when we were dealing with issues of our own budget, and, uh, the state as a whole, um, funds special ed across the, uh, the needs of the state, and they actually shift money around at the end if people have money left over and so on. But they've seen a distinct, um, change in the last three years. Part of it was because our allowable growth did not go up, so we were not getting more money per student for, uh, special ed in this, in this case. Um, and if I can, uh, pull pretty close numbers out of my memory, uh, three years ago, the whole state was overspent by seventeen million. The next year, it went to fifty-five million overspent, and in thirteen, it was seventy-seven million. So that was the issue of the governor stepping in and saying, um, "We need to find out what's going on." So there was really two issues that Doc, as Dr. Lindeman was talking about, is first of all, is money being spent appropriately? Are they charging something to special ed that shouldn't be? Um, so there was a big review of that, the, the Department of Education had a task force, uh, that looked at all that and, and sent out regulations and, and lists and, um, FAQs and trying to get all of that, uh, in place. Uh, the other thing, as Dr. Lindeman referred to, was a couple years ago, uh, the state came out and said, "The AEA's can't be in charge of this. They're not an, they're not a district." Um, so we had done that for Castle Hill last school year, where we said, "It's now our program, even though AEA is running it, it still has to be ours." But even in that, they had, they, they took the, the finding that when the AEA ran it, like a consortium like that, they could charge whatever they wanted. Um, there wasn't any, um, mechanism to review the control of saying, "How many, how many pairs were needed, and how many teachers were needed," and, uh, they just took whatever they, well, it, you know, it was certainly, uh, critiqued or scrutinized by the AEA, the superintendents, and the special ed directors, is what I was trying to say, of what was an appropriate cost. But all of the costs that AEA would have, they would just divide it up by the number of kids and their waiting, and charge all the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it was transportation, whether it was operation of the building, whether it was administration, whether it was teachers and pairs and so on. By state definition, some of those things can't be charged to special ed if we're running our same program. We can't charge administration, because it's part of their one-point-oh waiting of any student. We can't charge the operation of the building. So really, in essence, these kind of arrangements, we're getting overcharged to special ed because they were just charging it all as tuition. Even at the end of fourteen, the year that we just got done with, even though this contract doesn't start until fourteen-fifteen, this school year, AEA and Cedar Falls billed us last year like we're going to be this year. So part of the operations, part of the administration, did get charged to general fund, not special ed, because it does not qualify as a special ed, um, approved expenditure. So they really kind of jumped ahead of the curve a little bit, but it really is the right way to do it. But also with that, it gives us some opportunity that if it is, um, an operations expense that could be, and one of the things they're talking about is rent of the building, that that can be paid out of PEPAL, not out of the general fund. So they've, they have narrowed, um, some of the things that can be charged to special ed, but they've identified some things that can be, uh, spread across some other funding. So it's kind of a give and take, um, but it really is a more accurate way of looking at how, what special ed costs and who should be paying for it. So it is a, it is a necessary and a, um, a good vehicle to get in place.
And the only other thing I would add to then is that the administration, as, as, um, because of the consortium, we actually have a seat at the table on decision-making. So, every district that is participating in this consortium will have the superintendent serving on the administration board, so, um, so we actually do have a, a seat in the operation of the building, which is not really how we've, we've had a determination of whether we place students or use the building, but we've never had a decision as far as the, the operation of the building, which that would be different with a consortium too.
So how many member districts will there be?
I think, oh gosh, I'm not exactly sure. The meeting that I went to, there were probably nine people sitting around the table, but I think there are more. There were some that were not there, so there would be, um, yeah, I would say ten to thirteen, maybe?
There would be a geographic component though, correct?
Certainly, cause you're transporting your students, right.
You know, Mason City would, even though it's in the same AEA, it'd probably be too far to drive every day.
Right, and I'm sure that there are other facilities that serve children with cognitive delays that would be, that, for whom this is the best placement.
So what percentage do we expect to be Waterloo students?
Um, I believe out of the, oh, I think there, we're over half, well over half of the students are, are Waterloo kids. I think there are fifty-some Waterloo, out of the, I can't say exactly what their enrollment is, but I believe fifty-five students are Waterloo resident students out of seventy, eighty, ninety, somewhere in there.
So the administrative structure is, so these superintendents, I mean, do they act as the policy board, the Board of Education, if you will, that sets, uh, everything from curriculum to discipline to dismissals to everything?
It would be the decision-making, mm-hmm. And, and right now, we haven't had any of that, because AEA has been making that decision. AEA has been making that decision, and now it will shift to a different group, of which we will be at the table.
What does, what does the AEA two-six-seven actually provide for us then?
Up until now, they've been everything. They've been the, the hosting building, they actually do own the building, so they own the building, they were administrating the building, they were, um, the fiscal agents for the building, um, they actually were running it. Everything that we do for any building, that's what they were doing.
So what will they do now?
They will only serve as a consultant level at the level that we have for any of our buildings. So AEA is really a consultant, um, they're, they're designed to be consultants, not managing a building.
Okay.
So, will the teachers and staff, they would be Cedar Falls School District employees?
That's right, because they are the host building and the, so they are hosting.
Okay, whereas in the past, they were probably AEA two-six-seven employees.
They were, yep, their contracts were held by AEA, and now they will be held by Cedar Falls, so it'll be a shifting of that, which is, is similar to what we did with, um, Devonshire, which was, you know, we, we became the, um, we didn't, we opted not to do a consortium, we actually decided to take that building on as, as, you know, and to take our, um, to bring the students, um, and serve them in one of our buildings. Cedar Falls isn't doing that, they're actually keeping the building open, and so there would, they would be leasing it from AEA.
Okay, I see.
As you talk about the different locations, are there different age, ages that go to the different schools then? Is that how it's broken up?
Mm-hmm. Um, I think that River Hills is a, is a PK twelve building, and so there are multiple, it is, it is, mm-hmm. And, and probably the best description that would help you is probably on page, um, forty-four, there, if you turn the page to program, the program description, "The River Hills Program serves students in pre-K through twelve with significant IEP cognitive needs."
So all students would have an IEP?
Yes, it is, yep, it is.
And so for those students, River Hills, but the IEP team would have decided?
Right, they, yep. They would decide that that is the right placement for them, and, and the least restrictive, the least restrictive placement for them. And it's a day program, it's not a overnight program, it's not a residential program, the students, um, through transportation, they arrive in the morning and they stay for the day.
So other districts have to provide transportation for the students?
Right, we've all been doing that, we've just been paying the AEA to do that, but everybody transports their own children to the building.
Okay, okay, so Hudson would be responsible for student in Waterloo?
They would take care of their own children, right.
Do we have a couple buses?
Dunkerton.
That do that, or vans?
Um, I would guess, you know, I'm not really sure, the, the actual transportation, my guess would be, it would be either vans or, um, perhaps a bus, but I would guess that the students, because there's, you know, fifty-some kids coming from all over Waterloo, I would, I don't believe, I mean, we might run a bus if there's a logical route, but otherwise it could be a van as well.
Okay. I'm trying to think, the only, in Waterloo, we had Cal, we had Devonshire? I'm trying to think, the only, in Waterloo, we had Devonshire, which shifted, I think, even before the change, maybe, and the interpretation of the laws, or that sort of thing. But then Castle Hill did, and then it was River Hills, and I think Bremwood, is that? Waverly, is that right? Is that the last, the other one?
That is the last one, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. And that one would be, going through the same thing with Waverly, because Waverly would be the host district and so.
So is kind of the purpose of a consortium to put the power back in the districts? Is that kind of?
Well, yeah, and it's legislatively required, because AEA can't run the building, so somebody else has to run the building, so there's multiple options. Either you can disband the school and have the kids be served elsewhere, you could have the one district, the district in which the building lies, could become the host site and then run it with a consortium. I mean, you can do a variety of things, you can actually, I mean, you could close the school and have the students go somewhere else, but that's, Cedar Falls is opting to take on the running of the building, the operation of it, but it would be governed by groups, so.
So when AEA had it and have now released that, those employees are now Cedar Falls employees?
Right, because AEA could not hold their, I mean, they're not running the building anymore. The only involvement that AEA would have from this point forward would be, they would be leasing the building, because they actually own it, so they're leasing it to Cedar Falls, for which we would be billed back as participants. And then there are other, would be the same role that they would have for any special needs child in our district, that they would be serving as, their psychologists would serve as consultants, their team reps, I believe is the right name, they would serve, too, all of them.
And they would charge us for that?
And they, you're right. Well, we actually do pay for that through flow-through dollars, there's a certain percentage that we pay, so.
Okay.
We already have that agreement with them.
What would be another option, then, since we are providing or sending more than fifty percent of the students there? So if we said, "No, we're not going to do that," we would serve them internally in-house?
Right.
And then the school might not exist, or?
Right, I mean, that certainly would be an option. If we said, "We have a building that's right for the students, and we have a program that we can serve the students," we could take the students back in our district. Because this is a program that has some history and it has a specially-designed program for the students, it really, probably at this point, is a good option for us to continue with the consortium. Could we take them in-house and run our own program and then allow other districts to, you know, perhaps tuition in? We could, we could. I think at this point, it's probably a good idea to enter into the consortium, because it's already established and because it's there, and because there is actually a little bit of, there will be some cost savings associated with that because of the way the consortium is set up, some more accurate billing.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I motion carried. That takes us then to our last item for action. It's on the agenda, it's Exhibit J on page fifty-six, regarding inter-fund loan resolutions. And in some ways, I don't know if this is tied to the kind of annual meeting or reorganization, but it's a similar resolution regarding inter-fund loans within our school district. We'll get the motion on the table, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Coffin for a background. But the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund of up to six-point-five million dollars, the Physical Plant and Equipment Fund of one-point-five million dollars, and the Food Service Fund of up to one-point-two million dollars, as provided under the DE, Department of Education declaratory order.
So move.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And this, again, Mr. Coffin, if you could provide some background on this as well.
So this is not required by the annual meeting, because everybody does not do this. So, but on the other hand, it's something that we have to do annually.
Oh.
So, put annual where you want in that. But on an annual basis, whenever we are considering and practicing the transfer of cash between funds, we have to have on file by board approval, giving the authority for me to do this. Now, we have, because of cash flow needs in the sales tax, that's why we're doing the general fund, up to six-and-a-half million. The Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, we get about two million dollars a year, but sometimes we spend a lot of that early in the year. So we go negative early in the year, and then as the property tax comes in, it repopulates that. So it's just a timing thing for it, and we stay within that million and a half. And then food service, the way food service money comes in is we get the majority of our funding from state and federal reimbursement, and that doesn't come in until the end of every month, so the expenses that are going on during the month, payroll, food costs, those usually get a little ahead of our cash flow. So this enables us to inter-fund borrow money on a monthly basis, just until the state and federal. I do want to let you know that we record all of these on a per-incident basis, so we can go back, the auditors will be doing that this week, of saying, "You borrowed and paid back, you borrowed and paid back." It's not just something kept on the side, it's run through the books all the way through, so we can look and see where we're at right now, because it would have to be reconciled with the monthly bank statements as to what is being transferred in between funds. But state code requires that this is an annual renewal of this agreement by the board for us to be able to do that.
But right now, the only loan would be to the Capital Projects Fund.
Right now, that's all we have.
In the state sales tax, the one-cent sales tax, if I understand correctly, they do pay it monthly?
They do.
Based on per pupil enrollment, but they hold, they have like a ten percent holdback that they?
Five percent.
Five percent, that they pay in, after June thirtieth?
November, yeah, we get it in November.
For the previous year?
Following, right.
Okay.
For the following fiscal year, they pay off the difference in November. They do a calculation of their estimate of what the whole state is going to raise, and then they divide it by number of students in every district, and then take that times ninety-five percent, and that's the payments we get every month.
And you get a one-twelfth payment of that.
Yeah. So then they make up that difference. It usually ends up being about half of a month. We usually get eight to nine-hundred thousand a month, and that makeup is about four to four-fifty.
Okay.
I see it says there's a one percent interest rate. Are we paying ourselves interest?
We are, and that's required by the statute, if we're going to borrow.
I guess I'm wondering, how is that money being moved around, then?
Well, it would be an expense to food service or PEPAL or the sales tax, and the general fund would get the benefit of that, by borrowing the, the recommended rate is six percent. So you can see how old that law was when they wrote it.
Oh, I see.
So it's just by choice, since we have to do it, I just put in one percent.
Got it, okay.
We have to charge something.
No free loan.
No free loans.
Even if it's within the school district.
But it's just money being shifted from one account to another.
From one fund to the other.
Bottom line really doesn't change much.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not a big dollar amount, anyway.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I motion carried. And that concludes our action items on the agenda, so next is the superintendent report. Dr. Lindeman.
I've got a few things, one is a little bit longer, but just a couple calendar things that I think are interesting. First of all, you know, thank you to all the parents who weighed in on the graduation dates, we're happy to have those published, we've worked pretty hard on that, so glad to have that done. We did have our professional development a week ago Friday, where we had the, all of the students were home while we worked with all of the teachers, and it was, we went to five Sullivan Brothers and had just a really amazing day learning about multiple-tiered systems of support, which is just a long acronym for helping to serve all students and giving them multiple opportunities to learn what is essential. So that was just really a great day, so I know for parents, that's sometimes inconvenient to have to come up with extra arrangements for, you know, different arrangements at least for students, but we really appreciate that time, and I think it was very well spent. I would also, we are ending, we've had a video on our website, we are ending September, which is Attendance Awareness Month, but I would just urge parents and just remind parents that we are still wanting really good attendance, we're entering into cold and flu season, and I think Angela Weekly got her already, so we're just hoping that people will, you know, use really good judgment. We want kids to come to school, you know, we certainly don't want them to come sick with a fever, but, you know, we really need students here, so Attendance Awareness Month is not just September. We'd like to wish our fourth graders good luck on the Mayor's Fun Run on Thursday, that is just always a fantastic event. I actually, because I have to do, as a new superintendent, I do mentoring with the state, it's required by law, and my day is on Thursday that I need to go, so I'm actually going to miss it, which I'm really sad about, because it's just a great day. So Bev and Charles are going to be running, they will be bringing their sweats and will be running with the, no. No, they will be attending at my place, whether they run or not is completely optional, so I don't know about that, but they will be representing me, so I appreciate that. I guess just two more things. I would, just wanted to let everybody know, I'm working on the assessment, the Governor's Assessment Task Force, and I've been keeping the board up to date as much as possible, but we are really nearing a conclusion of our recommendation to the legislature, and we don't know what will happen out of that recommendation, but it has been, I'm just going to say grueling work, it's been really tough work, really needed work, and so I would, you know, we'll make sure that we work with the courier to get some, you know, additional information about what that recommendation, it is due to the legislature on January one. So, and we're nearing, I think we're just a few, you know, just probably two or three meetings away from having that recommendation. Matter of fact, last week I went to a meeting, and it was eight in the morning till eight at night in Des Moines, so it was a very long day, but it was really, and they didn't give us very many breaks or anything, we got fifteen minutes in the morning, and it was timed. So it was heavy work, but I'm doing some heavy lifting, but that's great. And then I, oh, I guess I do have two things, sorry. I would just make sure everybody remembers that the, on October third, we have the East-West Football Game, which is always a really great thing, and this year we have something exciting, extra exciting, in that the middle school bands are going to be joining our high school bands, so I just think that is a fantastic opportunity, so we hope everybody will come. It should be just kind of a showstopper with, you know, with such a great number of kids, and I think I can't wait, so my kids love the band, so we will be there front and center to watch that, so that's great. And then finally, I would just let everyone know that we are working really hard on the High School Task Force reform. We have a couple of really critical meetings coming up on October second, where we're going to be talking a little bit about planning and facilities, and facilities that match our programs, and then in, just a week later, we're going to be doing kind of an expanded, kind of a trial run, we've invited a group of community folks in, and we're just going to, we're going to kind of share a little piece and then say, you know, give them a chance to give us feedback, what made sense, what doesn't make sense, what might need a little more explanation, what's going through your mind right now, just to kind of give us some good feedback, because we will be hitting the ground running in later October and certainly in November and December, meeting with people and doing a variety of meetings, and we just kind of thought a trial run would be a really great way to make sure that we get it right, so that it makes sense to them. So we're really gearing up, we are, we're doing meetings quite a bit, and Tara is really helping with the communications plan, because we are committed to being fully transparent, we don't want anybody ever, you know, coming to the, to, you know, to anything to make any decisions without knowing really what that's about. So I guess that's the end of my report, it's been busy and fun.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. I know it's been busy, but all, it seems to be moving forward, so, progress, I guess. With that, information from board members. And I'll start this way, I'll start on this side, I've been starting over here before.
Well, just piggybacking on what Jane said, the task force committee members are all charged to invite a community member, so it isn't a selective group, it's just, you're inviting a community member, so if you really would like to attend, let Jane know, and we can probably make that happen.
I bet we can.
So, but it's just an opportunity to get an initial feedback from people, and so I appreciate that being offered. Just wanted to say, too, that both East and West had their homecomings, and everything went off well, congratulations to the king and queens, and just, I was at the West, and the student behavior was very good, and I just, kudos to our students.
Thank you, Sue. And Chanley McNally.
Jane, you took all mine, I was going to talk about the band, jeez, that's all right. But I was going to say that West High's doing the pre-game and East High's doing the halftime show, so you also get, besides the middle school kids, you get to see both high school bands, which is pretty cool, so come to the game on the third.
Great, thank you. And Andrea Sparks.
Well, let's see, oh, the East High homecoming, I stood on the sidewalk in Fourth Street and watched the parade of the East High homecoming, and that was fun, especially the, they liked the drum.
Yes.
Yes, and it looked like the drum needed to be replaced, so I don't know, maybe we should think about that, it had a lot of dents in it. But anyway, it was fun to see the East High parade.
Great, thank you. And Mike Kinsey.
Nothing at this time.
And Lyle Schmidt.
A question, and do we have an update on the student attendance count? Have we surpassed last year's total yet or not?
Yeah, I've been really asking a lot, and we are getting very, very close. What's happening right now is we are looking at, there are a few students who haven't shown up yet, and we suspect that they have transferred to a different district, so right now, we are calling to make sure, see if we can locate them. The other thing that's happening is that districts that are starting to send requests for records, which is what happens when they go to a different district, you assume they would ask right away, but some of them are doing that right now, so we are really cleaning that up. It looks really good, but I am going to refrain from giving you anything that would be an actual number, so stay tuned, it's due October one, so we're nearing in on that.
And I also attended the football game this last, so congratulations on the win, and the band, one hundred and eighty, I think, ish.
Oh, wow.
They fill goal line to goal line this year. So that was impressive, and I hope the people organizing this middle school and high school band performance were the ones that suggested it, because I'm not sure I bought that test.
It was, it was, it was not, yeah, it was the one.
Okay, it should be a great show, but we'll see.
And again, that's coming up on October third, Friday, so two weeks from today, or two, a week and a half, yes, from now, yes, okay, got it. All right, and then our next board meeting will be in three weeks from today, it's on Monday, October thirteenth, at six P.M. here in the boardroom. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move in a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair votes, I motion carried. Thank you all.